Alright, I'd like to call the town act and planning board meeting to order for June 15th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'll stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes? That right here, last May 18th.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from May 18th as written.
A second. All in favor? All opposed? Did you get that?
What was it? The sidewalk?
Uh, yeah. My move, we approve the June 1st minutes. A second. All in favor? All opposed?
I wasn't here.
I wasn't here either.
So three?
Yeah. That's it?
Yep.
Alright, at this time, we'll start the, open up the public hearing for Lori Streeter, 2633 Milton Mills Road, map 246, lot 017-001, application for conditional use for ground-mounted solar array tracking. Do I just come up quick and say something? For public? Just tell them what the project's gonna be about?
Basically, it's just installing a 24-panel solar tracking unit.
Sorry, guys. It wasn't working.
I'll open up for public comment. Any comments from the public? Nope. Okay. We'll close the public hearing then for the Streeters.
Stay right up here, the rest.
Yes, stay up here though.
So we're just gonna go over some stuff with you and pretty much just talk about the conditional use checklist and get you on your merry way at some point. So I guess we'll, I guess we'll, you're planning on putting it in, right where my mouse is, pretty much circling in this area?
Uh, no.
No, you're over here.
No, up, straight up, down a little bit, yeah, somewhere in there.
Okay, right here.
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's off to the right of the top, right-hand corner, adjacent. Up more, get right in there.
Okay. Would it help if I just didn't? Right there.
Yep.
Much better.
And this is for, obviously, personal consumption or personal use, not consumption.
How was the sidewalk?
It was fine.
It was just me and John.
Yeah.
Guess she should've showed up to find out.
Yeah, yeah.
It's well, nobody's gonna see.
Can't see from the road.
Can't.
Yeah, I bet maybe.
It's well back. There was, what we saw is no other trees coming down.
No.
No, we took a couple down previous, before we got there, but...
Kind of up on a hill, and it's, it's a good spot.
Yeah, even the house next to him really won't see it, in the house, even though it's their son's house anyway, but it's still gonna be pretty well covered.
Yeah, it's hidden by the garage.
Yeah.
I think we should go through the standards, right?
Yeah. You guys want me to read them, or anybody else?
I'll read them tonight.
Alright, the standards, applicable to condition use, the first one is, the use will not have an address impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, or other wildlife habitat. That's true, it will not. Hearing no counter. B, the use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies, that's not applicable. C, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, yes. Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance, that's not applicable. The site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations, not applicable.
Not in the flood zone.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, NA.
NA. Adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made, and that's, doesn't apply. Adequate provision for transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made.
What do we do with the last one? I'm trying to remember. It's on the home, it's on the, so yes.
Yes, 25 years down the road.
Yes.
They're responsible for the...
Is there a warranty that goes with it, so if it gets damaged?
Yeah, 25-year.
Yeah, so it's the same, same for that. So they replace it for up to 25 years?
Correct.
And then what are you gonna do with it after that?
Who knows if I'll even be alive then, so, you know?
Alright.
H, stormwater drainage system capable of handling 25-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed, that's not applicable. Adequate provisions to control soil erosion, erosion and sedimentation have been made.
Gonna be some minimal digging, right?
Yeah.
Go on like a cement?
Yeah, it's gonna be, they're gonna dig a hole, basically three foot square, six feet in the ground.
Yep.
And then most all of it's going back into the hole.
Yeah.
And the hill, the hill, uh, did you chip those trees? I mean, the hill had chip all over it, right?
Yeah.
So I think, I think we can say yes there.
Yeah.
Um, adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes?
That's a yes.
Yeah.
They have plenty of water.
Plenty.
Buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like, that's yes. All performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met, yes. Archaeological and historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected. Yes or NA?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you know how far away from your property line it's actually gonna be?
Technically, the center of it's supposed to be 37 feet.
From the center of it?
The center of center of the panels.
It'd be to the full, that's all they end up.
Yeah.
That should be 20.
So then that would put us like 27 feet to the edge.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to, I was just looking to see what the...
I think it's 20 feet wide, 26 tall, or something like that. I mean, if we have to slide a little bit to keep the 25-foot, we will.
Yeah, you're supposed to, yeah, so I gotta maintain the 25-foot rule, so I'm, we'll have just go a little bit, but a couple feet.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hey, so this one, it's got plenty of buffer, and as long as they meet their setbacks, I think, I think that'd be the condition. I don't know if you guys have any other ones, just other than that? So...
I'll make a motion, we approve the application for conditional use for 2633 Milton Mills Road, tax map 246, lot 017, tech 001, for the addition of a solar...
Tracking solar?
Tracking solar system to the residential property, with the condition that the posts be moved such that 25 feet separation from the property line be maintained.
Second.
All in favor? I'm abstaining.
Why you, you gonna say why you're abstaining?
Well, relative.
Okay.
Be proud!
So it was for...
4-0, right?
4-0-1.
4-0-1.
So when you're abstaining, Adam can vote, can't he?
I would certainly.
You could, you have to designate him.
You're right, so right now, it's just, it's still 4-0, but if you're gonna abstain for the next one too, for the next, next public hearings, and you said you, then you're gonna have to designate him after that.
Jason, you gonna do a little, something for us?
I will, so, I will, I, I'll do it, and you guys can come in to my office after the next planning board meeting, it's pretty much, it's just gonna come up something like this, and I kinda just throw it together.
Do I have to wait to give it to them?
No, you, you guys have been approved, this is just gonna go in your file after, so you can tell, have your solar company start getting, making the right arrangements to get you guys all hooked up and ready to go.
Perfect.
I don't know if we've finished the building permit part of it all, but we'll, we're gonna get a building permit for that, pay the fees, and then...
Fees have been paid.
Yeah, they've all been paid.
Oh, okay, okay, I just, my, Dave's not here today, so he would've been able to say, no, it's already done.
Yeah.
So, okay, great, so you guys are good to, good to start moving forward.
So come for the permit next week?
Yeah, come for the permit next week, and the next planning board meeting, I'll have, I'll have created one of these for them to sign off on, and I'll just put it in your folder, if you want a copy, come in after the next planning board meeting, you can have a copy and, and, but...
The next meeting?
The 6th of July.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess once, while we have a second here, this was the Donovan's approval?
Oh, the phone?
Yeah, and I'm just gonna pass it around, and all I did was just a quick little thing, I put one condition on it.
It's the buffer?
Yeah, it's just the buffer, maintaining that one little buffer and...
You want both of them signed, or?
Um, yes, please.
Yeah, then they can...
Yes, please.
The applicant can have them. They don't have to register.
No, yeah, just so they can have it, yeah, this is just in-house, it's not a site plan major.
Uh, do I sign those?
Not that one, um, I don't know who approved that one, actually, but, hmm.
I know, that's true, it's like, if I wasn't at the meeting, I just signed it. At the meeting where we signed that?
I think it really matters anyways, lies.
Yeah.
Alright, Chris.
Alright. Next up would be for Brian Perry, 668 13th Street, map 143, lot 034, application for greatest practical extent.
Um, just to recap for the members that were not here, last planning board meeting, Mr. Perry came in for a greatest practical extent, the board voted to approve the conditions with a, with a one, moving it back one foot or something like that.
We had a vote to move it back two.
Two feet, and it...
And the motion didn't...
Right.
Didn't pass.
Um, so with some discussion, the members of the planning board had asked them to go back to the drawing board and try to figure out how to get it further back. What you have in front of you on the two smaller one was the original proposal, which has a little red ink on it, and then what he's proposing now, doesn't, when you look at the, the distances, so the original was 88.8 feet to the water, this one is 90.4, but don't take that the way it says, because, they shifted it left and went back further, but it's closer, still closer, if you look at the volume calculations, before he was proposing 619 square feet in front of the, in front of the 100, which would've left him with, excuse me, he was proposing 433 square feet, which left him with nothing, he was using up all his expansion, as well as 4,550 cubic feet, which would've left him with 7%. He is now, the whole main structure is behind the 100, and he's proposing 269 square feet, which is less than what was originally in front of the 100, and 2,100 square cubic feet in front of the 100, which is still, which is less, so he's actually going backwards, which is, which I think is what the board was trying to accomplish last, last time. Was getting the structure behind the 100, so before, he had, he had a good, a little portion of the structure, the main house, and I say structure, I'm talking the main house, not the porch, was still in front of the 100, now he's got the main house behind the 100.
And how was the sidewalk?
Again, that was just me and John.
Yeah.
No, no.
Oh, wait, oh, no, a couple of the guys, oh, that's right, that was the...
Adam was there, I wasn't walking down the stairs, I can tell you that. A paraglide down.
Down to that shed, you had talked about that shed, and it's, it's not a, you were concerned it was a pump house or something, it's, it's just a shed.
I was just, this, they were taking part of it, their 30% was coming from the shed initially.
No, no, they, no, it's gone. So they already did that, that was a greatest practical extent in the past, and they, that was for same size, same location, and it was approved by the board a few years ago.
21.
21.
Yeah.
To redo that shed down there.
Shed has already had 30%.
No, they, they replaced it same size, same location, but they had, because they were removing a structure there, in order to do it, they had to, greatest practical extent.
Right.
Uh, sidewalk was good though, no? They have, it's, in front of the house, it does pitch off, it's really steep, they don't, you know, and it's, it's pretty flat in the back, and it's nice, good lot.
That was the issue from the sidewalk, it was apparent the house could move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I, that's what I remember thinking a couple meetings ago, but... I wasn't on the sidewalk, so...
So...
And they have moved it?
Yep. Lot, lot coverage is in this right now, it's just on the notes on the side, so that's why I didn't have them fill out any paperwork, so lot coverage, existing lot coverage right now is 10.6%. With the expansion on the house and the proposed garage, he still is maintaining the 20%, I mean, he's, he's skating by, but it's 19.5%.
Yeah.
Lot coverage. So he does, he does meet that requirement as well, he's meeting all his setbacks, minus the 100, but all his side and rear setbacks.
Do we have one that shows what the site looks like now?
Um, yeah, hold on a second.
Has the proposed garage moved at all, on this, on the revised plan?
So, so Gavin, the, the house right now is this hatched, is the, is this one?
Right.
And it goes all the way to where this porch is. Right, and this is the 100, this line right here.
So there's no garage there at all?
No, proposed 28 by 28 garage.
Yeah, so there's nothing on there.
Yeah. Um, and then this is, we'll go with this one, this is what he's now proposing today, and this still shows you the, this hatch is the original structure.
Okay.
And the original structure actually came all the way up here, and now that's going backwards.
Right.
And as you can see, he shifted, I think it's south, and, and back.
Toward the sideline a little bit.
Yeah. In order to compromise.
He maintains a walkway between the garage and the building?
Yeah.
Yep.
He's got a four-foot, four-foot separation. And this, I guess in this case beneficial is he doesn't have to rip up, he can maintain some more of this patio that's, was there.
And that was in the 19% calculation?
Yeah.
What did we do with the side stairs there on the, the southern corner? That's, that's different in this version than it was in the...
No, they're, the stairs are irrelevant, there's gonna be no stairs there, those stairs that you're seeing are the existing structure.
Okay.
In the redesign, there's no stairs there.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
And, and part of that 20% includes, you see that walkway in front, that's gonna be significantly reduced, so that current calculation assumes that's all in, but that's not gonna be maintained, because we're not gonna...
So it's gonna go down?
Yeah, it's gonna go down, because the front door is near that, that front section.
Yeah. Is your, is this, your front door still gonna be here?
The front door's in, yeah, that section, that's actually a front porch.
Okay.
That section, that goes straight across.
Okay, that's good.
Any questions for Mr. Perry, or?
Well, as I see it, I mean, it looks like there still is some room to move it back, but at the same time, the applicant has gone through the process of reconforming it and moving it back some, so, you know, it's, you know, we, we, you know, he's working with us on that. So it's kinda you know, up to the board if we're, if we're satisfied with this proposal, or, I mean, or the potential, you feel like we can get the thing behind the 100 entirely. And it seems like there's technically room to do it, and there's, the garage is non-existent at the time, we don't really take that into account, we're dealing with the main primary structure and the location of that, but not, a proposed garage, you know, it's, it's not there now, so... And they're, and they're, they're septic, and the power lines and everything are out of the way. Those are, you know, usually are limiting factors, other buildings, the road, power lines, and stuff, and I didn't see any of those really in the way on this applicant.
So is that showing the foundation underneath the porch?
No, that's, that's the existing structure. There's no, the porch will have sonotubes or piers, I believe is what it was, so at least little impact in front, it's gonna...
That's the only thing that's in the 100, I don't, I think that's pretty reasonable.
You know, I'm, I'm sat, I, my personal opinion, I'm satisfied with what, with him moving what he did.
I think you said digging those around the front, with the storms we're having, it's just gonna do more damage.
Yeah, you always went to the site, too.
Yeah.
He's done what we asked, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he came to a pretty, I think he compromised with the board on this one.
Do we have anything else on the best practical location form that we need to fill out?
I have it right here.
We're all set with that, man.
Yeah, I'm, I'm filling it out as we go, so it's just, you guys can come to your conclusion, and I'll write down the, the numbers and... 90.4?
90.4, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the condition.
Alright, I make a motion that we accept the best practical location for Brian Perry, 668 13th Street, map 143, lot 34, and the new structure to be located no closer than 90.4 feet to the high water line.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you.
Brian, so come to my office when you get a chance, and we'll start, or we'll start doing the building permit unless you're looking, you're still working on your plans, be ready for a permit, and all that stuff, alright, I'll, I'll contact you tomorrow or something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Brian, can you pass that to Chris, please? On the bottom? Next week, next meeting, excuse me. Next week, next meeting, excuse me, July sixth, we have two public hearings, one for James Wood, which we just went to earlier today for sidewalk for ground-mounted solar panels, and another public hearing for Matt Leck for his storage, the law on Nason Road for storage for his equipment? Yeah.
What was the first one?
The James Wood solar panels.
Yeton Lane?
Um, there's, something was on the table, I haven't heard anything about it, so I'm really, really not gonna go over what, because I don't have an application in right now, but we might have something that's gonna take some time. We'll see, yeah, we'll see, and I will call you guys to come up and pick some information, if that's the case. Also, next meeting, probably, I will have Scott McLeod will come in with some documents, because he's trying to amend a condition of a subdivision that was approved in two thousand and, hmm, I don't even know if it's two thousand and three or four, and it was a fifty-five and older community, he's trying to have that amended, so it's just, the lots can be sold to whatever. I spoke to, I spoke to North Star about this one, and it's, yeah, it wasn't that big of a deal. And I could have Ben come in for that too, if you guys want him here, just, because, like, like I was saying earlier, Ben feels that it's something where you don't open up and go over all the conditions, you're just dealing with that one condition, that one amendment.
Yeah, but that, it's not a slam dunk, I mean...
No, 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 I'm not saying it is a slam dunk.
We gotta talk to the school, we gotta have the schools provide input. I think it raises another issue, I was looking at that whole growth.
Turn those things over, because they were designed with different standards, because they're fifty-five plus, and, like, smaller lot sizes and...
Small lot sizes, where the open space, the open space creates, it gives, so you still have the lot sizes, but it's more of...
Right, but it was a cluster subdivision, it was, it was just a reduced-sized subdivision, it's a different category. Are we talking about Eagle's Trace, or?
No, we're talking about, um, it's on Youngs Ridge Road, is it Youngs Ridge Road?
Yes.
Um, there's a thirteen-lot subdivision out there.
Oh, okay.
It hasn't even been built on.
It's got two, like, Jersey barriers, you probably driven by it, just never...
Yeah.
No, I know, I know, it's down there, yeah.
We'll have to look into that, buddy.
Yeah, I can, and I can...
Matt already gave his opinion, though.
He gave me a, I just had a conversation over the phone, I can send him some information, and I can have him come to the other, and come, have him come to that meeting.
Yeah.
Just, because he's, he knows subdivision law a lot better than myself and public the board, so... You know, I'm saying that in a bad way, I'm just saying, you know, he does this all the time.
Uh, that's interesting. We should look, look into other cases around the state of, of that being attempted or happening, or how the, what kind of conditions are placed on it if that was moved over, yeah, alright, okay.
Yeah, the only thing, the, apparently the fifty-five and older lets them bypass the growth thing.
Right, so they can build more houses and get in here.
Well, the growth permit had to do with, because the growth permit had to do with, it was, wasn't just because they didn't want so many houses, it was also because they didn't want an influx of, like, kids having to go to school at once, you know, you have all these houses whole. Yes, so, you know, it was trying to maintain some, you know, growth, instead of saying, okay, a hundred houses, come in, and then you have, you have, you know...
Crazy people that have fourteen...
Seventy-five new students, you know, all of a sudden.
Yeah.
So, that's kind of, and that was, that, putting it in the fifty...
Fire department, that kind of...
Exactly, and the...
Not overwhelm the...
A hundred percent.
Streets of the town.
So, the fifty-five and older communities made it so that it was exempt from growth, a growth permit, so they could just, that's why the whole Eagle Trace and Patriots Lane, by my understanding, and I could be wrong, but this is what I was told, that's why that went through the fifty-five and older community.
Right.
Exactly why.
So...
I also think we need to look at, you, you had mentioned that, so fourteen new units, that would not, you still wouldn't bust the thirty-five
Right.
cap on, on housing, but that cap is supposed to review, and I just looking at this, getting ready for the meeting, it's supposed to be reviewed every three years. So, for several years now, we haven't approached that, the ceiling should come down.
So, you're...
That should not be the ceiling.
Right, the last year, I think we did thirty-three. I think it was thirty-three, but, so, and, and this, that could be my fault too, I might've been doing them wrong, because he, the previous code officer was doing them, if you did a seasonal conversion on a camp, like, like what we just did, if they're, if they're going for a year-round camp, they would get a growth permit for that. I wasn't, I didn't, wasn't familiar with that, so I wasn't, you know, there was some things that I might have been missing at the very beginning. But with this, what just got approved, that's gonna be their year-round residence, so that will be a growth, that's gonna, they're gonna be hit with that. And I just found that out a year, you know, so...
Okay, but that's, that's something we need to consider.
Yeah, no, I get you, I, I agree.
Tell us the comprehend, reading, comprehension plan, what it has to say with that.
Right, and you also have that new LD two thousand and three that's coming in, ADUs are growth permits, but I think that, that two thousand and three also states that those are exempt, now are exempt from growth permits. But previously, every ADU that came in would be, would be an additional growth permit.
Well, it's an additional residence.
Mm-hmm.
What about tiny homes?
Yes, tiny home is still a residence.
So, you had two sidewalks earlier today?
Yeah, yeah, the solar panels was James Wood on Yeton Lane, he's very well-hidden. Very well-hidden, no one's will even know, I don't even know there's a house there, let's put it that way.
You're gonna do the road there.
Yeah. And then, um, well, the other one, we'll talk about that one, I mean, it's a, you know, he does have a little bit of resource protection, where he's gonna potentially wants to put that stuff, so, like John had stated, we'll probably, you know, possibly flag it, but we'll deal with that when the applicant's here, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Just giving you a quick oversight, but, you know, it was a nice flat area, it's pretty much just gravel and, and scruff weeds growing up everywhere.
But we didn't have, nothing was flagged for the sidewalk, though.
Well, it's all cut out, wherever it's just open, that's pretty much what he's planning on using.
It's just a tiny...
It's not a small area.
It's an old log lane, no, no trees again, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just gonna brush.
You can go down Nason Road anytime you wanna go check it out, it's just a, it's a, there's a red gate there, and you'll just see a cleared opening right there, and that's, he's really, he's not opening up any more area, he's just gonna brush hog the, the weeds and just park his stuff there, and he's not even sure, he's not even sure when or if he's even gonna do it, it's only a backup plan.
Yeah.
But he, he wanted to make sure that...
And it's Japanese log weed anyway.
Is that it?
Yeah.
I'm gonna re-adjourn. A second?
All in favor? Gavin's out too, so...